Okay. So I think we have the Lake Boone Commission members here and I'm here. And I'm going to just start by reading the legal notice. This notice is given by the Lake Boone Commission and the Stow Town Clerk. We'll hold a public hearing on May 20th at 7:00 PM. Access online via Zoom video conferencing to discuss the proposed amendments to the Stowe General Bylaw. By amending Article 1, Section 2, which is for the purpose of changing the date of the annual town election from Tuesday to Saturday, and amending Article 6, Section 21, the Boating Regulations for Lake Boone for the purpose of updating sections to conform with Mass. General Law, Chapter 90B, 323 CMR 2, and minor clarifications and adjustments to other rules to reflect more current circumstances. And the reviewed text could be viewed in the town clerk's office or online. So I'm going to start with the general bylaw amendment for the town election. Today, I'll go over a short review and then I'll pass it over to the Lake Boone Commission for years, though it looks like many of you are here for the Lake Boone Commission. So the general bylaw change is proposing to go, I'm proposing to go from Tuesday to town election to Saturday. And the reason for this is it provides, it will provide a safer environment for the students and school staff. Holding elections when school is in session causes concerns to school staff, administration, and parents when strangers, AKA voters, are at the school. Typically, all the exterior school doors are locked, those students are in the building. And on election day, the doors to the music and special education wing are open. And there's more, the parking, the voter parking is near the preschool kindergarten playground. Switching to Saturday will also provide more parking spaces, more convenient parking for voters that we won't have to contend with, competing with the teachers and the other staff in the parking lot. In the front parking lot, I think there's only 65 parking spaces and a good portion of them are taken out by staff. This also eliminates, a Saturday would also eliminate issues related to student drop-off and pickup because parents line up along the building and wait to go to the front door and to pick up their kids. And they're sometimes out on, listening to the voters trying to get in and access the parking lots. And then the drop-off times that it, its problem is usually 8:20 to 8:55, again, at around 11:50 for another half an hour. Then there's afternoon pickup, there's pre-K pickup, there's full day pre-K pickup at different times. It's time where it's very busy. Also, moving from Saturday to a Saturday election will provide a consistent polling location within the school. Right now, we switch between the gym and the cafeteria and the music rooms. And a lot of voters, they get confused, do I go, which door do I go to? So we see, and we even have people go up the hill to Hartley Road, just hail, and we haven't been there for at least five years. So that would be a little help for you. Also, using the music room and the special services wing displaces the music classes and the special education classroom. And so the janitors remove the furniture, or a good portion of it, or we push it against the walls. And then we come in and we only set up a small portion of the number of voting booths that we need to do when we're in the music room because that's all we can fit in there. Technically, under Mass. General Law, you'd be setting up 66 voting booths for every election. We do less for that in a smaller, in the small, for a town election. Then, so why can't schools be closed on elections? Well, for many years, I've tried to have the schools close for at least the state elections when it's a large election, and I got a lot of pushback from that. And within the last 10 years, and even within the last four, we get better response. And so they do take, they have been taking November elections off. And then we use the other spaces, music room, or we're in, we've been in the school when school is in session, and we've had to add more detail officers. This year, for the first time, the school committee agreed to have the March primary have a, be a day off, the September primary will be a day off, and the November election. And I hesitated to ask, because I had gotten pushback for state elections, for a town election to be closed on Tuesdays, because it's usually a small turnout. And I feel badly asking that the kids already are going, you know, taking other election days off and either starting school early in August or going later in June. So I've been a little sensitive to that, and we've been able to fit in the music rooms. But now with more concern about children's safety and other things, I got to thinking, well, why not do it on a different day? And a couple of people, we've talked about it, and I thought, well, let's go, and that's fine, I'm changing it now. Could we hold large elections at the community center? The reason, the question was, could we, why don't we hold all our elections at the community center? Well, won't fit large elections there. We do about 300 cars an hour, or voters an hour during a state election, the March primaries. So that POMPO will not accommodate that. It could accommodate a local election. But every time we change locations, we have to notify the voters. So there's an added cost to do that. And also, when you look at it, the voters get confused whether we use the music rooms or the main part of the school at the gym and the cafeteria. Think about, and I think about that, can't remember which door to go to. I'm concerned that voters will forget which school or location to be. Are they at POMPO now, or are they up here at Center, back and forth? So it's confusing, and we already know that it's hard to get people to remember what precinct they're in. And when they're all in one precinct, then we, in one location, both precincts are in one location, then we can move them, just step to another side of the tape and go into another line. So that's one reason why I want to keep the precincts in one location and not split one into POMPO and one somewhere else. The only other place to have the elections currently is the schools. And we do early voting here in the town building, but it's spread over 10 days. So I can accommodate voters to going that way. And then there's been a question about whether we'll do voting by mail or do more voting by mail. And we may do so in the fall. And thus, there might not be a need to be using the schools. But I'm hoping that this pandemic ends sooner rather than later, and that we will still have offering a lot of voting in person. Right now, that's the way it is. So anyway, I've put a lot of thought into changing the date, and I'm looking for other people's feedback. I'm now opening up to questions or comments or anything from the public out there. Anybody? Who may have a question, comment? Anybody agree, disagree? Go ahead, Connor.
Different day than Hudson, that means that I get to go to your meeting.
Well, this will be elections, not town meeting.
Oh, just elections.
This is just for the election. So right now, we're the second, we're the Tuesday, eight days following the town meeting. So it's a Tuesday. I'm proposing that it be the Saturday following town meeting. So I did hear one comment from someone who was concerned that Saturday was the Jewish Sabbath. I think that's a consideration. I'm not opposed to, I'm not opposed to having election on a, on another weekend day. I'll see what others have to say.
Can you hear me? This is Ellen.
Hi, Ellen.
Hi, sorry, I've got computer problems, so I'm only on audio.
But I can say, we need to state our name and address.
Right. Right. So this is Ellen Sturgis, 12 Canterbury Road. I just, I'm totally in support of this, having worked in elections as well as just seeing, you know, the angst of the schools, and I think this is a great solution for everybody. You know, and I totally respect your last comment about the Jewish Sabbath, and there's still that option to, to vote by, you know, absentee ballot. So, I mean, I think the reality is that unlike the discussion, you know, I noticed at the selectmen's meeting, you know, it was sort of the red herring brought up about, you know, oh, well, you know, parents and activities and stuff. But that's when we were talking about town meeting, which we're not talking about. We're talking about a five-minute commitment to vote, you know? It takes no time at all, and I, I think it's just going to make it easier for everybody. You know, we don't have a huge turnout, maybe we'll actually get a better turnout because people won't have to try to rush in before work or after work. So I think it's a great idea, that time is long overdue, and I totally support it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, Megan Birch-McMichael, 3 Carriage Lane. As a parent of children at the center school, I also highly support this. It's been tricky doing drop-off and pickup during, during the election, and, and I think this is a great idea. And hopefully, like Ellen was saying, we'll get more people to the elections, spreading it off. People, you know, parents have a lot going on on the weekends with kids, and people have a lot going on on the weekends with kids, but many people do not work on Saturdays. So this is also giving people an option to get to the polls. So, good job, thanks, Linda.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, Linda.
Yes, who's this?
Yep, Chris Cravlin from 107 Kingland Road. Just a question, is there precedent, like are there other towns that we know of that have done a similar thing, or is it pretty unique to us?
There are several towns that have Saturday elections and have been doing it for a long time. Some have switched in the last few years, especially because schools were, it was difficult to, to, yeah, like schools were, I'm sorry, we're having technical difficulties here, so. Okay, we're seeing if this works any better for this Stowe TV. So I don't have that list in front of me, Chris, but I do know that some have been doing it for years. I did a survey, and a few others had changed recently, within maybe the last five or six years, especially when this, there was more violence at the schools. Not necessarily during elections, but strangers walking into a building and affirm to the children.
Yeah.
And I'm sensitive to that. Yes.
Okay.
I can get that data.
No, I just wanted to ask, Linda, you don't, you don't need to produce anything, I just was curious if we, you know, seen other towns doing the same thing.
Yep. Well, the Clerks Association has a great listserv, and that has actually been a topic, so it's, I can just kind of pull that data and have it available for town meeting, because I'm sure this is a question that would come at town meeting. Thank you. Anybody else?
David in Carrick. Yeah. Yeah, I think it's a good idea to do it on Saturdays, provided that the absentee ballot is always available for families that go away for a weekend.
They are. Absentee ballots are available for anyone who is away, out of town. I mean, even if you work out of town, you don't have to be away on vacation. Say you're, you know, running errands and going to be out of town all day.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, the other question.
And for religious purposes.
Yeah, okay. The other question was, would this be, is this just to try out for a year or two, or is this, would you like to see this carried forward?
So the bylaw change would make it permanent until we amend it again.
Okay.
So it's, you know, you could try it out. I mean, we do have the election this June on a Saturday, but this is going to be an anomaly because we're doing all, we're encouraging people to vote by mail. And we already have over 600 requests for absentee ballots, which is the most, I think I've had for any election, including a state election. But usually for a town election, I get 50, 30, 50 requests. So it's not a really good indication of the participation if we had more in-person voting.
Thank you.
Yeah, and David, you're at 12 Pine Point, correct?
That, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right. Hearing and seeing none, other questions for me. I am going to turn this over to the Lake Boone Commission. Chris, it's all yours.
Great, bring myself off of mute. So thank you. So I'm Chris Cravlin, one of the two Lake Boone Commissioners from Stowe. We also have Dan Barstow, the second Commissioner from Stowe, and Conrad Warf, our Hudson representative today. So what I thought I would do is share screen and just really quickly run through why we're doing this, and then we'll open it up to questions. I'm not going to go through, oh, can you enable me to screen share, Linda?
Deb's, Debbie Seith is running my, hosting this for us, and hopefully we can screen share. I see it. There we are.
Let me try again. Says disabled for attendees.
Hold on. Uh-oh.
Okay, you know what?
Why don't you talk about it, and we'll see if we can fix that? Keep talking. I'm going to shut my video.
That's fine. All right. So what I wanted to do is just real quickly explain the background for these changes, you know, why we're doing it, and then we can, if there's questions, we'll talk a little bit about what they are, if necessary, and go from there. So a few things to know, the Lake Boone Commission, we refer to ourselves as the LBC, was established by the state to actually manage rules for the lakes. So reasonable rules and regulations for the protection and policing of the waters of Lake Boone. And so we have the authority to do that, and from time to time, to adjust and repeal rules and regulations in accordance with that state law. So that's the first, and that's our authority. The second thing is just that the bylaws that we have, there's, there's two elements of our bylaws that are established. So we have, we have general bylaws, which have to do more with conduct on the lake, a little bit quaint from, from ancient times, I shouldn't say ancient, but, but these are, you know, some of these things were established back as far as probably the 50s. So, so we have the, sort of the general ones, and then we have very specific boating ones. And at the time that the boating regulations were put in place, there were not necessarily state regulations for some of this. And so that's the reality. So we have boating regulations that were put in place in order to help ensure the safety of folks on the lake, and with consideration for the size of the lake. So that's kind of the, the understanding of, you know, what that piece is. The, the third thing that I just want to be clear about is that there are now state laws that govern pretty much most, anything that, that has to do with boating, especially, well, not just motorized boating, but boating in general and safety. And so we fall under the, that jurisdiction, we have to abide by those laws. We cannot have anything that's more lenient than the state law. We could put in place rules that are more stringent than state law, but we cannot loosen them and do something that is less, lesser than the state laws. So in 2000, probably in 2016, 17, it became, we, we came to recognize that we had boating regulations in our bylaws that were no longer in compliance with the state law. So we were, we were now in a position where, even though we had those rules, as far as policing the, the lake, those were not the, the applicable laws. The laws really were, rules were based on state law in most cases. So we, we addressed, we started the, the work of addressing that, and we worked through in, in 2018, we had multiple LBC open meetings, we had a public hearing like this, a physical public hearing, because we could at that time, back in November of 2018, and.
Chris, can I, I'm sorry, can I interrupt for a second? I just made you a host, so you might be able to screen share now.
Oh, all right.
That's helpful.
Yeah, hang on one sec. Back to my Zoom and see if it will let me. It will.
Okay, okay.
All righty. Sorry, I had to take the visual off for it so I could see the other thing. So if you were raising your hand, I couldn't see it. All right. Just, this one, a little bit easier to see. Okay. So I was, are you able to see my screen now, the background for changes?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. So the last thing was just that we started this back 2017, 2018, held a bunch of meetings, held, held a public hearing back in November of 2018, in order to get public input on our proposed changes. We, we did go through all of that. By December of 2018, we, as a commission, did agree on and finalize the wording for our bylaws, and we were prepared to have those represented at town, Stowe Town Meeting last, last spring. And there was an issue with the way certain things were represented in the warrant, so in any case, we could not take that to town approval. The other thing that I want to just let folks know is that the reason we have to come to town, to Stowe Town Meeting for these boating regulation changes is because back in, I think in 1963, the town of Stowe codified these boating regulations into our Stowe General Bylaws, within the police regulations portion of the, the bylaws. So since those are there, we as a commission can't just, can't change it entirely on our own, we need to work through and have the town agree also on the change to its overall bylaws. And the same is not true for Hudson. Hudson does not have these boating regulations in their bylaws, so the process is a little different there. So I'm going to stop there for a second and ask if there are any questions, or if you would like me to, to talk a little bit more about what the, the changes are. So let me read through, I'll just read the article in the, as Linda did, what we're asking at town meeting. So this is Article 42. The actual wording may be tweaked a bit when it finally gets printed, but this is the current draft of that article. So Article 42 is to amend boating regulations and police regulations at Lake Boone. We will be looking to see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaw by amending Article 6, Police Regulations, Section 21, Boating Regulations at Lake Boone, to read in its entirety as stated in the, in the warrant below, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the general bylaw, or to take any other action relative thereto. So in summary, and I think Linda mentioned this at the beginning, we are, are making changes to boating, the boating portion of these bylaws, to bring them into compliance with Massachusetts general law. And the, the prime, one of the primary things we're doing is removing rules, our representation of rules in the bylaws that already exist in, at the state level. Because it is better just to have the state law clear and encompassing, and puts us in a position where if state law were to change, we don't have to come back and change things through town meeting, again, to, to adjust to those. Okay. So are there any questions? I'm going to stop sharing for a moment where I can see, because we may have hands up or... Are there any concerns anyone has around us moving forward with the changes? And I'm not hearing anything. Are we, are we comfortable then that we have no further feedback?
Well, this is Dave Gray at 12 Pine Point Road, and I'll just say it was good two years ago, and I think it's good to go now.
Thank you, David. Okay, well, as Linda mentioned, the details of the warrant are on the website, there's a summary of our, the changes that we're making. And what you'll see when you do finally see the warrant, what you're going to see is the clean version of what we would have the, the police regulations portion indicate in our bylaws, and you'll see the, the marked up version of what it, so what it is today with strikeouts and additions. It's, it's really pretty difficult to, to read through that, and partly that's because what we did with the, with making the revisions to the bylaws, is we stepped back and we said, what do we really need in here? And so we had to take out a lot in order to, to really let the state law take precedence and, and not try to replicate that. And so we, we made them shorter and we, but that will, that represented stuff. When you look at the warrant, you'll see a lot of crossing out, a lot of stuff, and a few things that got moved to be in a more logical place because of what we did. All right. Well, seeing and hearing no further questions, I think we can close the Lake Boone Commission portion of this. Whoops, Linda, you're on mute.
I think unless there's anything else, we can close the entire hearing. And I believe, you know, we'll be able to get this onto YouTube. I know Stowe TV was helping with us get this recorded. So, and anybody, I'm telling anybody to pass it along, let, if you have any other comments or questions, I will look forward to hearing from you, even though the here, public hearing portion is closed, I'll take comments before town meeting. Because I'd like to know what anybody thinks about any of our proposed changes.
Yep, and I would suggest the same from the Lake Boone Commission. If anyone has, has questions, you can reach out to any of the three of us. And obviously, we would much rather address questions here, or, you know, one-on-one and address any, anything that you have, rather than, that take up extra time at the, at the town meeting.
I have a quick question. Does the Lake Boone Commission have to vote to close the hearing? I know, Linda, you don't, because you're not technically a committee, but do you do that in a public hearing? Do you vote to close it, or no?
Um, I think you can take the vote to do that.
Okay. I motioned that we close this May 20th public hearing.
And I unmute and second it.
Roll call that, well, because some people may not have the video portion. The roll call was Chris was in favor.
Motion.
Made the motion. Doug, Don, Dan seconded it, and now you can do your roll call vote.
Yes. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor? Aye, Chris?
Aye. Dan, aye.
Conrad, aye.
All right.
Motion passed.
We're good. One last thing, I'm, the hearing's closed, but I take one last moment. Anybody who has not gotten an absentee ballot, there's still plenty of time, please do so quickly. quickly, because if we get a rush, it'll overtax the Town Clerk's Office. Debbie and I have been doing most of it, with a little bit of help from a couple other people. Voter registration for the town meeting is June 2nd. Voter registration for the election is June 17th, and the warrants should be out in, within a couple of weeks. It'll be sent to every household in Stowe via the Stowe Independent. Okay? I think we're set. Good night.
Linda, thank you very much for setting this up.